Yes, I'm here.
All right, and you're Ms. Petry or Petree?
Petry.
Petry, okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Let's go on the record. Today is June 23rd, 2023, and the time is just about 2:00 PM. My name is Ken Sire. I'm a regulatory law judge with the Missouri Public Service Commission and will preside over this local public hearing. The commission has set this time for a local public hearing in file number WR-2023-0006, which is captioned as "In the Matter of Confluence Rivers Utility Operating Company Incorporated's Request for Authority to Implement a General Rate Increase for Water Service and Sewer Service Provided in Missouri Service Areas." The commission has scheduled this local public hearing to give members of the public a chance to comment about Confluence Rivers' rate case. The Missouri Public Service Commission regulates the rates charged by public utility companies in Missouri to ensure that those rates are just and reasonable. The commission also regulates the quality of service and safety of the operations of public utilities. Confluence Rivers is a public utility under the Missouri statutes and, as such, is subject to regulation by the commission. The commission is made up of five commissioners. The commissioners are appointed by the governor to fixed terms and confirmed by the senate. The commissioners employ a staff of engineers, accountants, attorneys, financial analysts, and other specialists in the field of utility regulation. With us here today is Chairman Scott Rup and Commissioner Maida Coleman, and I believe online, Commissioner Kayla Hawn and Commissioner Jason Holsman. Commissioner Holsman, Commissioner Hawn, if you'd like to identify yourselves, make sure I'm right about that. Commissioner Holsman, are you there? *6 is what I'm told is the unmute combination if you're on the phone.
Hey Judge, Judge, this is Commissioner Holsman. Yeah, I had the *6 to get unmuted there. Just welcome everybody to the hearing and thank you very much.
All right, and I'm going to assume Commissioner Hawn is on and we'll touch base with her in a bit. This is an official hearing-
Commissioner Hawn is also on.
Okay, thank you Commissioner. This is an official hearing of the Missouri Public Service Commission, and the statements and testimony of witnesses will be recorded by a court reporter and must be given under oath. Once the hearing testimony is transcribed, all of the commissioners will have the opportunity to read all of the witnesses' remarks. Know that commissioners value your comments and input. At this time, would any of the commissioners like to make opening remarks? Chairman Rup.
Thank you, welcome everybody. Thank you for the great turnout today. I just wanted to remind everybody that this is like a court case, and we are unable, the commissioners are unable to answer any of your questions. That is why we had the question and answer period beforehand, and we could not be a part of that, and we had to stay outside. So that would be akin to, you know, seeing a judge in the grocery store and saying, "Hey, Judge, I've been watching the murder trial. Do you think he's guilty?" You know, we can't answer any questions because that would be preceded as us prejudging it. So if you do pose a question to us, we cannot respond. It's not that we're being obtuse or just, you know, refusing to. It's just legally we cannot communicate on this side, and that's just, you know, how the rules of the trials go. So, but we are here to listen, and the commissioners are online to mission, plus we have the transcripts, and everything that you do testify will go into the actual court record and be used as evidence and stuff for when we have our official, you know, trial, you know, up in Jefferson City in a couple months. But thank you for the great turnout. We are here to listen, and I appreciate if you do have comments, please do come to the microphone and make them.
Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you Judge. I'd just like to say ditto what Chairman Rup said, but also to let you know that it is an honor for us to sit before you and hear your concerns, so, and we do take them seriously. And I'm a Sykeston gal, so every time I have an opportunity to be down in this part of the state, it reminds me of being home and also makes me want to keep going over 67 to Lake Wapapello where I spent all my summers. And I didn't get the color scheme today. No one sent me the color memo. But we do appreciate you being here, and we're looking forward to what you'd like us to hear. Thank you very much.
All right. Commissioner Holsman, would you like to make any remarks? *6 Commissioner.
Thank you Judge. Just wanted to thank everybody for coming today. We appreciate you taking the time to give us your feedback. It does matter, and we do listen, and we appreciate your time. Thank you Judge.
All right. Commissioner Hawn, would you like to make any remarks?
Thank you so much Judge. I'm so thankful to be able to listen to your testimony today, and even though I'm not physically there in person with you, I'll be listening very intently to your comments and concerns, and just want to hear your feedback, and so that will be taken into consideration with any decision made moving forward. And so I'll just be looking forward to hearing what you have to say. Thanks so much.
Thank you Commissioner Hawn. As you know, if you were here for the question and answer session, there are attorneys here representing the parties in this matter. For the record, would each of you identify yourselves and state which party you're representing? And I will start with the utility, Confluence Rivers.
Thank you Your Honor. David Woodsmall, on behalf of Confluence Rivers.
All right, and for the office of public counsel.
John Kleiser, on behalf of the office of the public counsel.
And Mr. Kleiser, could you spell that for the sake of the court reporter?
C-L-I-Z-E-R.
And, I'm sorry, Mr. Woodsmall?
W-O-O-D-S-M-A-L-L.
And Mr. Irving, are you online?
Yes, I am. Ron Irving, staff counsel.
Okay. Ron Irving. I-R-V-I-N-G?
Yes. Correct.
All right, thank you. The way this portion of the hearing will proceed today will be to call the names listed on the sign-up sheet in the order in which you all signed up. When I call your name, please step up to the microphone, but before you speak, I will place you under oath and ask you to state and spell your name, and I will also ask you where you, either the residence or the property, where you're receiving service from Confluence Rivers. And then I'll give you the opportunity to offer your comments to the commission. I will try to limit comments to five minutes. I won't strictly enforce that, but kind of keep that in mind when you are testifying, so that everyone has a chance to testify today. Once you do finish your comments, please remain at the microphone in case there are follow-up questions from the commissioners or the attorneys for the parties. As Chairman Rup mentioned earlier, understand that the commissioners won't be able to answer any of your questions today because they have to remain impartial and only consider evidence presented at the evidentiary hearing for this matter currently scheduled for August of this year. The commission has not made any decisions in this case as to Confluence Rivers' rates and other matters in the case. The commission is interested in your comments and will use them to help make their decision. If you have comments after the hearing, or if you, because of how long the testimony may take today, if you are unable to stay and give your comments in person, you can submit comments online via the PSC website, psc.mo.gov, and there is a link to submit comments. When you do that, make sure that you reference this case or file number, and again, that is WR, which roughly stands for Water Rate 2023, I'm sorry, -2023-0006.
Your Honor, real quickly, may I add that if any of you didn't get to ask your questions in the first part, Mr. Silas is still here, so yeah, please grab him in the back if you had anything you didn't get to in the first part.
Thank you Your Honor. And for the record, I'll add that the OPC will remain available to answer any questions after this as well.
All right. So the first name on the list is Sandra Bender. Ms. Bender, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Would you raise your right hand, please? Thank you. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give today in this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Could you state and spell your first and last name?
Sandra Bender, S-A-N-D-R-A-B-E-N-D-E-R.
And Ms. Bender, where is it that you have property that's served by Confluence Rivers?
Terrelac.
Like T-E-R-R-E-L-A-C?
T-E-R-R-E, capital D-U, capital L-A-C.
Okay, I'm sorry. Commissioner Coleman's from Sykeson. I'm originally from Cape Girardeau, but that one I'm not familiar with. All right, so Ms. Bender, go ahead and proceed with your testimony.
Of course, it goes without saying, I think everyone here is concerned about the amount of increase. It is, it's dramatic, and not only is it almost unconscionable that that increase would be that much at one time, I would ask that it not be that much and that it would be phased in over perhaps two or three-year timeframe.
Ms., I'm going to interrupt you for a second, Ms. Bender. If you can, if you can get within an inch or two of that microphone, it picks up much better.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
And the idea that they would be joining funds from every company or area that they are servicing, so that we would all pay one rate, and that it would be like a mutual endeavor that if maybe sometime we'd pay more, or we would pay for some repairs and someone else would receive the repairs and vice versa, I can understand the concept. However, if we have, as he mentioned, a specific project, we would individually have to pay more. So it's like they want to have it both ways, and I don't quite understand how, like, the commission would follow that kind of bookkeeping. It, I almost want to use the word creative in a negative sense, but I will have to say that we have enjoyed the improvements that Confluence has made, and hopefully that that will continue, and we understand that it comes at a cost. However, I think Confluence could do a better job of being part of the community that they serve with keeping the residents informed of the improvements they're making or future projects that they would want to do. I think people understand those things cost money, but when it's, they're asking for such a big increase and they don't have any information ongoing, it is quite a shock. I'm reminded of a, some of you will remember, a telephone slogan, "We're not the only phone company," or "We are the only phone company in town, but we try not to act like it," that it goes a long way with making people accept things like rate increases. Thank you.
Okay. Now, if you could, if you could stick around, I'll check with, to see if there are any questions for you. Chairman? Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you. Ms. Bender, do I understand that you're saying that you see a double standard here, that the company is asking or suggesting this payment, that all rates be kind of spread out over the service territory, but if there are issues or repairs that need to be done in a specific community such as your town, that would be, those costs would be borne by those who live in that district only? Is that what I understand you're saying?
That's what I understood him to mean when he said if there is a specific need in a particular community, that there would, they would have to bear the cost of that.
So is your concern more that your actual rates would not possibly be, you wouldn't necessarily be paying the rates that you actually have generated, but you would be averaged across the board with others, and yet you would be okay if you didn't have to make those payments across the board and strictly pay for what you use? Is that what you're saying? I know I'm confusing because-
No, I understand the concept of spreading cost. It does, if you have a large enough amount of people, it does lower it for everyone. But if you're going to do that, then people can't anticipate what they're going to have to pay, people that are on a budget. And it sort of defeats the purpose of spreading the cost over a large amount of people if you're going to have to pay for something over and above individual, in an individual community. That's what you're spreading the cost for.
I get it. Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right. Do any of the commissioners have questions for Ms. Bender?
Thank you.
All right, thank you Ms. Bender. All right, the next name on the list is Jeff Romines. All right. All right, if you'd raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you've given this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Could you go ahead and state and spell your name for the record?
Name is Jeff Romines. First name J-E-F-F, last name R-O-M-I-N-E-S.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Romines.
I live at Terrelac. You already got the spelling of that. My concern is, we have seen the improvements over the last couple of years that Confluence has been there. Again, we talked about the water towers and some of the well pump stuff, they're putting the generators in, and again, we do appreciate that. We do appreciate our local folks that do all the repairs and do the work there. And under, I guess, my assumption at this, what this rate increase for is for what has already been done. It's not for what else is needed. And I don't think it is fair, again, like we've said, to the other communities that we all do across-the-board, like, increase. There are some communities that may not require as much as we do, that may can do a lower cost. May, ours might be a higher cost, and again, why is that fair to us across-board? The biggest issue, my concern is, I'm the fire chief, and they have done a lot of work to, again, like I said, our storage tanks, our pumps and things like that, but I still have numerous miles of line that are four-inch water mains that are not going to supply the water that we need to fight fires. Our little community, you could say it's the perfect storm. We're set up almost like California. If we have a wildland event, houses are stacked on top of each other, you have all the undergrowth, you have abundance of cedar. I can't trust that water system. Four-inch line's going to give me 1,000 gallons a minute if the pumps are working correct, if the lines are working correct. But most of the hydrants have two, two-inch outlets. That's still, even if I hook a truck to those two, two-two-inch outlets, I'm still not getting enough water. We've had to adjust our responses. I have put 10 other fire departments on my first alarm that I will have 10,000 gallons of water coming to me, but that's going to take time because we're all volunteer. How many houses am I going to lose in that time? We have talked with our local people, and from what we are told, Confluence has told them that they do not plan on putting any money into the infrastructure of the water lines or hydrants. We've been told that even if a hydrant goes bad on a four-inch line, they will not replace that fire hydrant. Actually makes sense, because I'm still not going to get the water out of a properly upgraded fire hydrant that I should. So again, that's my biggest concern because of the cost of the rates and all that. So with this increase, this is supposed to pay for what's already been done. They've done that to most of the sewer. They have not done anything to the water. When they get ready to go do water projects, if they do, what kind of rate increase are we going to have then? I don't mind paying for increases. I think there is a minimum that needs to be there. But they ought to work, I think Confluence needs to work with the local communities of what's the best for the community, and each community kind of be set aside of their own rate increase. I know it's going to be simple to say, straight across the board, everybody lumping in one sum. It's probably an easier method to do. But again, some of the folks may not require as much upgrades as we are. I think you're probably looking five to six million to upgrade totally our community for just the water lines and water improvements. Do we do that all at once? No, we don't have to, but we will work with them, be glad to work with them, fire department. I've tried calling them six times to get appointments, no callbacks. When they went and took our water towers out of service and started that, nobody in our community knew that the water towers were going to go down until a repair crew showed up that morning. We did some scrambling to cover ourselves as far as for fire protection. So that's, again, that's my biggest concern, because again, if they go to do water lines, we're going to be back to another rate increase here in a couple of years. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Romines. If you could stick around. Do the commissioners have any questions?
So to your knowledge, when they tore down the water tower, they did not send any prior notice to the fire district, to the city, to the county, or anyone?
We're governed by an HOA. We're an HOA community. A lot of the board members at that time, nobody knew they were coming in. The public works department guy didn't know they were coming in. I didn't know they were coming in. We found out about 6:00 that morning, but they were getting ready to take, well, they were going to do both towers, but they'll do one at a time. They have 100,000 gallons of storage and all that, but then again, like I said, no prior notice of anything. And I tried calling Confluence that morning. I made three phone calls to them that day with a timeline, what to know. We, all we have is their 800 number for their call center. Nobody, to this day, I've still not received a phone call back from Confluence telling me those water towers were going out of service.
And second question is, how many home fires did you fight last year?
Probably one. We're a small community, but that's not the object of it. We have some, we have some one to $2 million homes there, the access that it takes to get to there, plus the time factor. We are a volunteer fire department. Everybody in St. Francis County is volunteer except for the city of Farmington. It's, I've got 16 firefighters. We're just, that's the way it is. Volunteerism is down. On a daily basis, I may have two in Terrelac. And when we're relying on other departments, we may get a tanker from somewhere with one guy. We run a call in our dell this morning. 10 departments were paged, four showed up.
What's the average home price in Terrelac, if you had to average it?
You're probably 2 to 250.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions from the commissioners? All right. Mr. Kleiser.
So I have a couple of quick questions, hopefully. You mentioned you are an HOA community, right? A homeowners association community? Is the fire department, the volunteer fire department attached to the HOA community?
Yes, sir. We're funded through the HOA dues.
Who, do you know who owns the hydrant infrastructure? Is it owned by the HOA, or is it owned by a city or municipality?
Confluence.
Oh, Confluence itself owns the-
Yes.
Right. So there's no, there's no incorporated municipality or anything like that? All communication through Confluence is done through the HOA. Is that correct?
No, we can call their 800 number, but-
Well, when you had mentioned you had talked to somebody about trying to get a change to the fire infrastructure, was that the HOA who had talked to-
No, I've tried calling Confluence.
So the fire department directly has contacted Confluence?
Yes.
Okay.
And like I said, we're towers, the first tower went down nine months ago, when they took the first, it's, they're back up, but I made a phone call, I made three that day, and never received a call back to this date from them.
That was all my questions. Thank you.
All right, are there, yes, Mr. Woodsmall.
Your Honor, real quick, and I just want to make sure I understand what happened so I can go back and try and make any improvements necessary. When you say-
I'm sorry. When you said that the tanks went down, are you certain that they were taken out of service or possibly primed, patched, painted, that type of thing?
They were taken out of service one at a time over a seven-to-nine month period, or seven-to-nine week period.
And if you hadn't talked to Confluence, where did you learn that?
The contractors that were doing the work pulled up to the very first tower that's by our first, our fire station, and somehow it got to our public works guy, and he called me. This happened in about 15-minute span. Even our, I was told, the local Confluence contractor, or workers, did not even know that they were showing up that morning.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you for the clarification.
All right. All right, thank you, Ms. Romines. All right, the next name on the list is Gretchen Pratt. All right. Would you raise your right hand, please? Thank you. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give today in this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. Could you state and spell your name for the record?
Gretchen Pratt.
You put your hand down now.
Pratt, P.R.A.T.T.E.
Okay. Ms. Pratt, go ahead. What would you like the commissioners to know?
Well, the rate increase is excessive. Many people who live in Terre de Lac are on fixed incomes. In addition to that, there are a number of younger families who are either renting, I think some are actually section eight housing, and there are people who, about five or six years ago, when the property values were down, bought houses that now are worth quite a bit more, and they're on a very strained income. So we also have not had any discussions about how the boil water orders are given. There, in the past, we were able to either get an email or a phone call. I don't know that anybody asked me what my preference was. It's all email. I'm finding it difficult. I have fairly good service, but I don't use my email much because it just takes so long to boot up. I try using it on my phone, and I find that very inconvenient. Long and short, I've had several instances where I, my stomach was upset, and then later I found out that there were boil water orders on that day. One day, I looked at all my emails just to make sure there were no boil water orders, and then two hours after I got off the computer, there was a boil water order. This, I can't believe that this is acceptable. I can't imagine that it's acceptable in the city of St. Louis with people who maybe have no ability to get internet. It's also very inappropriate for a community that has a high level of older people who aren't that familiar with the internet. So, in, in compilation, I just want to say that it's an excessive amount. The people in St. Louis are upset about a 40% increase, and we're talking about a 200% to 300% rate increase. And I think something much more satisfactory should be done about the boil water orders.
Okay, is that, okay. Do the commissioners have any questions? You were, you were speaking of the boil order, boil water orders. How many times has that happened?
Well, I don't know when. It might have been in March that I realized that there had been some, and I went back through my emails, which was like three months' worth, and I don't know, there were at least six. And then that was the day that there was another one at two o'clock in the afternoon after I got off the internet. I don't know how many. Some of them are specific about certain streets, but they're not, I don't know, they're not all. In the past, we used to get it over the radio. I'm told that that's antique because people don't listen to the radio. I do. The homeowners association used to phone, too. Yeah, that's right, if they're notified. And a lot of times, Terre de Lac does, the homeowners association doesn't know about garbage pickup and many different things.
Okay. You live in Terre de Lac as well?
Terre de Lac.
Terre de Lac. All right. Mr. Kleiser, do you have a question?
You asked my question, Your Honor. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Witzmaul?
One quick question. You were saying emails are not efficient for you to be communicated with. Would text messaging work for you?
Oddly enough, text messaging would work much better.
Okay.
Because I find it very easy to find a text, whereas the computer has such a small screen, I don't have that good a service, and I just am not effective using email on the phone.
But a text message for you would be more efficient, more? Okay, I appreciate it.
But I, I think it's just unbelievable that you just never know when there's going to be a boil water order. I mean, it could be two times in one day, it could be once every three days, it could be once every week.
And the only thing I would tell you is, if you talk to Mr. Freeman or Mr. Silas, they may be able to answer the reasons why they're not predictable like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your testimony, Ms. Pratt. The next name on the list is Ralph Gifford.
No comment, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir. Then the next name is Jeff Hughes. Good afternoon, sir. I'm going to, I'm going to ask you to get closer to the microphone.
We'll get there.
Would you raise your right hand, please? Thank you. Do you swear or, go ahead and keep it raised, if you don't mind. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony given this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, thank you. And could you state and spell your, spell your name?
My name's Jeff Hughes, H.U.G., H.E.S.
And Mr. Hughes, where do you receive service from?
I live at Deer Run Estates in Madison County.
Okay. Deer Run, D.E.R., or D.E.R.?
D.E., just like the critter.
Run, R.U.N. Estates in Madison County?
Yes.
Okay. All right. You go ahead with your testimony.
I would like to start by saying I'm a sewer customer of Confluence Rivers, but we are a water customer of the Madison County public water supply, thankfully. I'd like to say also I emphasize with this commission that I know what kind of problems you have to deal with, that these things have been cropping up for years with these little sewer districts and little water districts that weren't made right. They failed, they fall in disrepair. The guy that built them's gone, you know, and of course, you don't want to fool with this stuff. They don't like it, there's no, you know, there's no money, there's nobody to sue. So it's a huge problem, and I thank you guys. With that being said, I saw this some six, seven years ago. I'm not sure exactly when it started. Mr. Cox formed this company and wrote in on his white art and started buying these water companies up. And I'm going, how's this guy affording all this stuff? And he had to have some pretty speculative loans to do this, and now he's buying up sewer companies and trying to consolidate them, which is not really a legal way to do this. And I'll point this out in a minute.
And, and just, I'm sorry, just...
The problem is, we don't know...
Sir?
The guy I'm paying...
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
I, I just want to interrupt you for a second before we get too far away from your, you mentioned Mr. Cox, that's C.O.X.?
C.O.X.
Uh, C.O.X., and he's, he's affiliated with Confluence Rivers, correct? Okay, go ahead.
My, my, and this will come back around here in a second when I make my main point. We as customers don't know this guy we're writing a check to, or this company. We don't know, since it's been deemed highly confidential by this commission, and I'm not making that a bad thing, I'm just saying that's the rule now. We don't know where the money is coming from, we don't know where it's going to, and we don't know if it's at armed length, is this guy a zillionaire that just started doing this because he was a good guy? We don't know. So we've created this little company that's controlling our water and sewer that really doesn't have a showing like a public water system. You can go get the records, you can find out. It's just questionable in my mind. The big deal is, Deer Run Sewer System, when it was formed, was certified as, well, not certified, was touted as the model sewer system for the state of Missouri in 1968, when this thing was born. And it's like, this is the way to do it. It's a closed-loop lagoon system. And I understand times change, more people move in, there's more stress on the system, and over the 25 or so years I've lived there, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars trying to fix the problem. We're not just laying back looking for something free. We paid for the last 25 years to be compliant. To operate a monopoly utility service in this state requires that the utility to secure a certificate of convenience and necessity from this commission. And I'm sure that lumping all these little problems into one big consolidation, and I put that in parentheses, makes it a lot easier on you guys to deal with one dude than it does 100 of us. I understand that. The problem I have in a landmark Supreme Court case in the state of Missouri involving the Callaway Nuclear Power Plant, and Union Electric, I believe that was, when they started bringing it into the rates, they had all these little local investors that invested in that power plant, and they wanted to raise the rates to pay them back. And it went to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court said, you cannot do that. They said, you can't charge these people way over here for a service that is not, and everybody learned this term, used and useful. It is the most important legal term, you will hear today. And I have a whole 34-page article I will not bore you with, from the Energy Law Journal. It's called Used and Useful: An Autopsy of Policy Rate Making by James Hawker. If somebody wants it, I'll be happy to email it to you. It's publicly knowledge, it's nothing secret. And it outlines what used and useful means. The Supreme Court of Missouri rules that concurrent rates should bear only legitimate concerns or... Should bear only legitimate, you can only charge the people that benefiting that the rate. So what happens? They come down here to my little sewer district that's been working their butts off since it's been there to comply, and they're going to rate our rate 314.8%. And that's just the first round, let me tell you that right now. What this is going to do is benefit somebody over here that is neither used nor useful to me, because I'll never be on their water system over in Kansas City or wherever they're doing it, because we don't know where this money's going. This guy's going, we don't, we can't know that for some reason. Just makes this pretty questionable, because there is a legal precedent on this that's already been tried for rates, utility rates in the state of Missouri. This guy's doing this all over the Midwest, and there's a lot of investigations that's being started up about it. This would be the same thing as buying up the St. Louis Ball Stadium and the Kansas City Ball Stadium, putting new, new bleachers in the Kansas City Stadium and raising the St. Louis ticket prices to pay for it. That's not fair, and that's what the state of Missouri said in the Supreme Court, period. I don't care if they hide a word consolidation that does not absolve you of the law.
All right. Mr. Hughes, can I, can I ask you a question? And this is kind of going back. When you first mentioned that in 1968, when your sewer system was put in, it was considered state-of-the-art, you used a term that I wasn't sure I understood, or, or the court reporter understood. Did you call it a closed-loop system?
It's a closed-loop lagoon system, is what it's called.
Closed-loop lagoon system, okay. I just wanted to make sure that's clear for the record.
Actually, the guy that built that worked for the St. Louis Sewer District, he knew all about sewers. This wasn't some Joe Blow contractor that cutting corners.
Gotcha.
And I remember, I was a child, but I remember, because it was right up the road from my grandparents, there was an article in the paper about how this was a model system, and that it, you know, needed updated. We've done it. To this day, Confluence Rivers has done nothing. I haven't seen a truck there. Nothing. So why do they get to raise my rate to fix some clown's sewer water problem over at Lake of the Ozarks? When the Supreme Court of Missouri said, you can't do that.
And, and I apologize, Mr. Hughes, I did kind of interrupt you. Do you have further comments? And if you do, I would just ask you to kind of wrap it up because we are kind of...
No, I was just answering your question.
Okay. Chairman Rup has a question for you.
Thank you, sir. Has Confluence made any upgrades to your system since they took ownership?
No, they, like I said, I haven't seen them there. They've done nothing that I know of.
So your concern is, why should residents of your area pay for the upgrades somewhere else when you have been upkeeping your system on your own?
Correct, because that's what the Supreme Court ruling said. And you're welcome to look it up. I'm not making this up. It's there.
All right. Are there any other questions from the commissioners? How about the attorneys for the parties? All right. Thank you, Mr. Hughes. All right. The next name on the list is Marty Franzak. How'd I do with your name?
You did good. Thank you.
I'm getting better at this. Mr. Franzak, could you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give in this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. Could you go ahead and spell your first and last name for the record?
Marty, M.A.R.T.Y., last name is Franzak, F.R.A.N.C.Z.A.K.
All right. Thank you. And what, where, where are you receiving service?
I'm in Port Perry, or also Lake Perry.
Okay. Port Perry, P.O.R.T., correct?
Yes, that's what they put in their letter.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, we've had a home there for 16 years. It is a, we're fortunate enough to have a weekend home and a main home. Question I have with 300% increase, this sewer system that we have in the lagoon systems only handle the wastewater and not solid waste? So we all have service tanks in our yard, big concrete tanks that keep the solid waste, too, so...
Septic tanks.
Septic tanks. So here we are, paying for our septic services, we're also paying for their services for the liquid waste, yet what they're proposing is going to cost me more than two times as much as I pay in Jefferson County, Missouri, for full sewer systems and water systems. And I just don't think it's justified at this point.
And your home in Jefferson County, who provides that sewer service? Is it the city or county?
It's Rock Sewer System.
Okay. And how do you spell that?
R.O.C.K.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Waters from C1.
All right. Did the commissioners have any questions? And how about the attorneys? Yes, Mr. Kleiser.
What do you pay for septic services?
In, in...
In Port Perry.
Port Perry. Right now, it's $33 a month.
Thank you. No questions?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Franzak. All right, the next name is Mark Skiles. Thank you. You've got your right hand raised. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give in this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. And could you go ahead and state and spell your name for the record?
Mark, M.A.R.K., Skiles, S.K.I.L.E.S. It's on the paper in front of you. So, anyway...
Where, where do you receive your service?
Terre de Lac. I believe the fees we're going to be charged are a little bit absorbent, and I think... and I think that they should be a little lower than what they are. It's kind of a lot to ask for people. Everybody's got their hand out nowadays for different things. HOA is asking to raise their rates and here we are stuck with now the water and sewers going up. And we're just asking for a little relief.
All right, do the commissioners have any questions? All right. Oh, Commissioner Coleman.
Hi, Ms. Skiles.
Hello.
So I have heard a couple of people mention the HOA. So I take it that the residents that, that's a part of this HOA paid their water cost to the HOA, is that correct?
No, we paid directly to Confluence.
You do get separate bills, okay. That's what I wanted to know, thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your testimony. Oh, I'm sorry.
One more, anybody who knows this. How many people, how many homes are in this Terrelack?
Fourteen hundred.
Fourteen hundred. Wow, thank you.
All right, so fourteen hundred homes, not fourteen hundred residents? Okay, okay, just wanted to make sure. All right, the next name on the list is Richard DeWilde. All right, sir, you have your right hand raised, thank you. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony given in this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, Mr. DeWilde, can I ask you a question up front? But first, before I forget, where is your property that receives service?
At Lake Perry.
Lake Perry? And do you, are you in any relation to Al DeWilde?
Yes, he's my oldest brother.
Okay, Mr. DeWilde, Al DeWilde, used to be my boss.
Seriously?
At TG, what is now TG Missouri.
Yes.
So, that was, that would have been about 1989.
Uh-huh.
So, all right, I'm sorry about that, I was just curious.
No, very good. I wrote all this down so I wouldn't forget what I was gonna talk about. So I tried to get to each of these points. First, I was a party interventer, intervenor, sorry, that put forth a viable business plan for providing
All right, I'm sorry, Mr. DeWilde.
Whoops, my name, how to spell it?
I got, yes, I got sidetracked with my curiosity about my former boss, my late former boss.
Yeah, I kind of understand that.
I'm reminded about that not just by Commissioner Coleman, but by other people close to me. So, now I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand again because I neglected to swear you in. So do you swear or affirm that the testimony given in this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you go ahead and state and spell your name for the record?
Richard, R-I-C-H-A-R-D, DeWilde, D-E, capital W-I-L-D-E.
And I have to, for the record, thank Commissioner Coleman for keeping this all on the up and up and legal.
That's good.
Go ahead, Mr. DeWilde.
All right, I'm gonna repeat what I had said. I was a party intervenor that put forth a viable business plan for providing water and sewer services to Lake Perry community in 2019 and 2020 at a fraction of the cost of Confluence Rivers. You objected to the merger premium they paid to purchase the utility company and we were, we thought, assured by the commission that they would, there would be no merger premium allocated in the rates. We now find out that Confluence has some $29 million of investments that are wanting to recoup. Since we have not been privy to what is included in those improvements, we are unsure if that premium, which we find out now, is going to be included in those costs. We believe we should have been notified when this rate increase was first proposed so we would have ample time to review and possibly intervene. Our first notification was merely a couple of weeks ago when we found out about these hearings. It is clear that Confluence and the Missouri Public Service Commission have been discussing and have received a rate increase request from Confluence and a proposed rate counter from Missouri Public Service Commission. As an original intervenor and a customer, we should have been given ample time to review the rate request and respond long before our notice. We are pretty certain Confluence is socializing their investment, actually, we know that after hearing today, that they're socializing their investment cost by including all of their costs for their Missouri systems with the Lake Perry improvements and possibly including the acquisition premium. Our system was not distressed at the time they purchased it, unlike the majority of the systems they purchased in Missouri. We feel like the new fences, the chlorinator, and painting the water tower that has been done at our system would be a small fraction of the $29 million invested. We understand their need to recover their costs, but it is unfair to have a substantially self-sufficient system pay for a share of the improvements of their distressed systems. Last, the commission has not served the people of Lake Perry appropriately and the rates being proposed are not just or reasonable. Now the accountant in me comes out and that is if they have $29 million worth of improvements and as I heard earlier, they have 4,000 customers. If you divide that out, it would only take them approximately 12 years to pay for that with the current, with only a $50 increase in everybody's bill. I thank you very much.
All right, do the commissioners have questions for Mr. DeWilde? All right, Mr. Kleiser.
I believe you've mentioned both Port Perry or Lake Perry and if you hadn't, somebody else had. Just for the sake of the record, is Port Perry and Lake Perry the same?
Exactly the same. Years ago, it used to be called Lake Perry, excuse me, Port Perry. And then at one time, they changed over to Lake Perry. That was when, in September of 2003, when they changed over. But the services is still called Port Perry Service Company.
Okay, so when you refer to Lake Perry, you are still referring to the Port Perry Service Company?
I am.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kleiser. Thank you, Mr. DeWilde, for your testimony.
Thank you.
All right, the next name on the, on the list, last name is Cox, C-O-X, and I am going to take a stab at it, Tyrese. Tyrone, okay. I couldn't read your handwriting. All right, Mr. Cox, would you raise your right hand, please? Thank you, sir. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony given in this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Sir, yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Cox. What, what, where is your property located that serves?
At Terrelack, I live in a trailer park.
Terrelack, okay, go ahead. Oh, your last name is C-O-X.
Yes, C-O-X.
And could you spell your first name?
Tyrone, T-Y-R-O-N-E.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I stated before that our community has been kind of like, let's say, companies coming in and taking advantage of it. But I'm just gonna stick to Confluence. Prior to this, it was told to me, when we talked before you entered in to the engineers, that there was a lot of work that needed to be done. Prior to this, the previous owners were very neglectful, apparently. But as logistically speaking, when Confluence comes in and you just go buy the place or however you want to say it, you bought it, I believe with the prior owners that didn't do, they had to do, a cost was put out. Well, I think demographically, Terrelack around Montaire, we're like one of the poorest in the whole nation as far as what we can pay and what we can't pay. I mean, as far as values and other things. Even houses be saying the 250,000 around the community is actually outside the community, like in Montaire. We live in a much lower poverty area. Well, they come in, you want to raise it, I believe, total 500%. But when you bought, when you bought into this, logistically, why wasn't, if it was saying, okay, we're gonna buy a place, this is the money we have to put into it. We're gonna put a million dollars in. And now we're gonna come and recoup our costs at $3 million. But my, you know, we weren't expecting such an increase. We say, we're gonna buy a water department, we're gonna get it. You came in, apparently, you had to know what you was buying into before you bought it. I'm sure, yeah, people you have to answer to. But when you got in there and you bought it, well, there are some problems. And then you had to fix. But as a company, that was a risk that was on you. That's what I feel like. But then that risk ended up being, because of us being a HOA, the previous company failed to do anything. A previous owner or a HOA now speaking owns a golf course. Now, here's my point. If he did nothing at all, you come in, you have to fix a bunch of stuff that was neglected. That's not our fault. But when you bought into it, you had to come in here knowing there were problems. Any, anytime you research anything, you go buy a car, you want it to be good. We say, I'll get a payment plan, okay, 2%. No, I'm gonna charge you 150%. But you said 2%. Well, you're just gonna raise it up. Well, we didn't know, or anybody else coming in. We knew a water bill. But what right do we have to say 100, you know, 150% or whatever? But because, I'm just gonna make it, we're trying to pay what we can. We're in a demographic area to where there's a lot of people, they're senior citizens, that basically made Terrelack what it is. We've had other people come in here, build their big houses, do their things. But still, the people that were there have to deal with, they're not all $250,000 houses. I mean, yes, there are some on the lakes, true. But the majority of the residents do not live on the lake. If you do a demographically area and look at it, but yet, our water system and infrastructure had to be taken care of. It wasn't. Well, you came in, you bought. We end up again, we're basically getting beat up again because before, nothing was done. Now, everything had to be done. But on the other hand, is it the people's fault? We had to, apparently, there, he decided to sell, okay. You decide, whatever companies decide to come in and buy and take over, you had to know there were some problems before you bought it. But because you found out there may have been more previous problems to it, maybe not as good of an investment as you might have thought it was. Now, let's see how much we're gonna increase, increase the interest rates up. I've seen numerous things done, but Confluence has done good, I'm gonna put right with right, you know, but then there are some problems. But when you bought into this, you had to know that there were other problems. Because everybody around knew there was problems. Everybody in the local community around Terrelack knew there was problems. So, why should we have to? Because what I said to the engineers before, if maintenance-wise, would have been taken care of. If maintenance-wise, would have been maintained. And you bought into this, would that affected when you bought into this? Would it be 150%? Would it be 100%? Would it be 50%? Or because you had to pay for everything that wasn't done, at 500%? Well, we, that's not our fault. That's not our fault. I mean, gradually increase, I understand. But on the other hand of it, I mean, you know, it's like I had asked a question, how much did you put out with the engineers? I've seen your paperwork here. They said, well, we can't answer that. Well, okay. You know, I get, in my, my trailer, nobody wants to mention the trailer park. Well, tough, I pay assessments, I'm entitled. You know, I'm entitled to say, hey, I get water, I get good water, okay, you know. I get egg smells in my house, in my trailer, egg smell. Or I get high bleach to take a shower. That's what I'm getting right now. My alkaline levels to, what, 256 on a thing that I had done, come in.
But, Mr. Cox.
I'm sorry.
Your what levels? Because you kind of turned away from the microphone.
256.
But those were, those were your what levels?
ALK level 264.
ALK?
Yeah, it shows in the red.
Oh, alkaline?
And that there, that was done by, actually, the DNR, but don't matter. I'm just saying, because I was smelling this and all I'm trying to say is that we are a community that really, in reality, are not rich. Okay, with that being, yeah, there are nice homes. But there's a set of people that we live that is like, we're separated in this community. Well, I live in a trailer. My average price is not 250,000. Well, what I'm saying is, in my area, not much gets done. But, okay, we're just gonna talk about water. But before this, with an HOA, somebody, anybody that gets on something there in a HOA had control of that water department before. And then, because it wasn't done, Confluence bought it, okay? Had to do, had to do the work to make sure everything's up to standard. And some of this, some of the radon levels were up and stuff or whatever before that, that we're paying the price. And my only thing is, is that, you know, we shouldn't have to pay for the neglect of the past, not to an absorbent amount. But I'm also speaking, you know, if you go purchase something, how could you not know that all these problems weren't there? Did you expect to get a certain amount of return? I mean, that's what it kind of feels like. Because I understand maybe say, I'm gonna present X number of percent, but 500%? And I'm just looking at the 200 or something, 205 and the 320% and I don't want to talk out of order.
All right, but, Mr. Cox, your main point is that over the years, when you were, when the HOA controlled your water system, you assumed that part of those HOA fees would go to maintain the water sys- I'm sorry. Well, okay, I apologize.
HOA, quote, how would you say this when someone on the board and that is on the board, then they purchase the old TDL utility?
Okay.
But what I'm saying is, we end up paying, it don't matter. Okay, what I'm trying to say here is that, okay. I don't want, I don't want to, I don't want to take something way out of something that isn't, you know.
And I'm not trying to put words in your mouth or anything, but I'm just, I'm trying to, I want you to try to kind of wrap this up just so that we can
Okay, just wrap it up, okay. Basically, in the past, however they want to say it, we never owned anything, but I want, it's, no, we, we have to pay for it now. If they raise it up, you know, we'll say 100% and that, or whatever. I don't know. I'm just saying, anything that was done in a community, we're always paying for. I mean, now, Confluence has come in, they fixed some things, that's true. But now, you know, to what degree, we don't, we're not all, okay, we're not all privy to $250,000 homes in the area. We're not all privy to whatever, but we have the elderly, we have the disabled, we have all this. Comes in and that, that is a concern with however, you know, the prices coming in if you buy something. That's basically what I'm saying. We buy something, you know, you know, you check it out. That's all I'm saying, y'all.
Let me, let me check with the commissioners, see if they have any questions for you. All right, any questions from the attorneys for the parties? Yes, Mr. Kleiser.
Very, very quick, you mentioned problems regarding taste, alkaline levels.
You mentioned problems regarding taste, alkaline levels. Did those begin before or after Confluence took over the system?
Actually both.
All right, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And the next name on the list is Rick Francis. All right, would you raise your hand, please? Thank you. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony given in this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you state and spell your name for the record?
Rick Francis, R.I.C.K.F.R.A.N.C.I.S. And my home district is Lake Perry.
Lake Perry. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify. For the record, I'm State Representative Rick Francis, serving District 145, which includes Lake Perry. And I'm also a lot owner at Lake Perry. I am opposed to the socialized approach to have the same rates for all your water and sewer districts. Let me use an analogy. If you're a farmer selling a thousand-pound steer and another farmer has a 400-pound steer, but you know what? We're going to share. Everything is going to get treated equal. I can tell you, you'd have some ticked-off farmers, just like you're going to have some ticked-off customers. I'm also opposed to Confluence using the premium they paid over the appraised value of Lake Perry as part of their request for a rate increase. I understand the physical tangible items like fences, painting, et cetera, but not the extreme overpayment at purchase. I sincerely ask the PSC to hold this rate increase down based on what improvements were made for each individual districts. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
All right, thank you. Are there any commis, uh, any questions from the commissioners? All right. Any from the attorneys for the parties? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Cindy Bohley. All right, Ms. Bohley, you've got your right hand raised. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony given in this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
All right. Could you go ahead and state and spell your name for the record?
Uh, Cindy C.Y.N.D.I. Bohley, B.O.H.L.E.Y.
All right.
And I am from Lake Perry.
All right. Go ahead.
Uh, yes, I'm just wanting to talk about the excessive gouging on this rate increase that they're trying to give us. Me and my husband, we are, the property that we have is a camping lot. So, we are seasonal. Obviously, we can't use it, you know, 12 months out of the year because of the weather. We, we do not have the capacity like your resident, I'm not saying that, trying to go against the residents or any residence, residential placey, places. But we don't have the amount of capacity. We don't use that amount of water, sewer, or whatever as a regular home would use. And I'm not saying that we don't, should, that we shouldn't have a rate increase because we haven't had one since we've been there. And we've been very fortunate with the rates that we're paying. But I'm asking that things should be reasonable and that a 2 and 300% increase when you are only using the facility that you're being charged for six, eight months out of the year at the most and only on weekends as, you know, just part-time seasonal recreational time. And I'm just asking that there possibly may, maybe be some sort of a different scale or something to people that are part-timers, recreational users instead of residential areas. That's really all I needed to say.
Okay, thank you. Uh, are there any questions from the commissioners? Chairman Root.
When was the last rate increase, do you know?
Um, we purchased in 2008 and we have been paying the same since.
Great, thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the commissioners? All right, Mr. Kleiser?
Sorry, Your Honor, I have a lot of questions today. You mentioned your residence is a camping lot.
Yes.
Am I correct in assuming that's effectively a concrete pad with a spigot and, can you just describe what that is?
Well, ours, ours is not concrete, ours is gravel. But we do have a water spigot. And then we have, um, in the ground where our waste goes.
So, is your lot individually metered?
Yes.
Okay. And is your lot part of a larger camping lot community?
Yes. Yeah, the, the specific area that we are in is called Tanglewood Trails. And that is strictly all campers.
Okay. And each one of those lots is individually metered too?
Correct, correct.
Thank you. No further questions.
And just, and just so I'm clear about this. So, there's a portion of Lake Perry or Port Perry that is permanent homes, well, I say permanent homes. Uh, and then there are also pads for trailers.
Right. Uh, the, the specific area that we're in and Tanglewood Trails is all campers. However, there are also areas on the other side of the lake that have campers also. Some are permanent campers, others are just by permit only to where they have to get a permit to come in on the weekends.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. Next up is Deborah Newhoff. Ms. Newhoff, why, why not, if you, if you can do it without destroying the equipment, thank you. Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony given in this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. Could you go ahead and state and spell your name?
Deborah, D.E.B.O.R.A.H.
All right. And where's your property located?
Our property is located at Lake Perry, Tanglewood Trails, just as the previous speaker.
Okay.
Um, so, two years ago, we purchased our lot at Lake Perry. And we budgeted according to the current utility rates. We expected increases, but not like this. It's, as was stated, a recreational community and we are not there full-time. We pay the bills year-round as expected, but we don't use a lot of water in the time we're there. So, my bill is going to go from $27.71 a month to $118.73. The sewer portion, as listed on my bill, is $14.21 and it's going to $80. The water portion is listed at $13.23. And I think that's all based on usage. And it will be going to $38.73, which gives us that total. So, if we get the proposed, the water portion will be $29, but we only use $9.54 worth of water. I, I feel like it should be more based on usage. And the next thing is the single tariff pricing and, and other people have kind of stated this, but the community, some are older, some are newer. I'm not here for the life of all of these systems. So, to have to pay for the life of all of these systems, it, it doesn't make me happy. Again, I think it should be usage. And then, it's my understanding that this utility was purchased from Lake Perry or purchased from the previous. And it was a, a very high price. Lake Perry wanted to acquire it and manage it themselves. And now, all of a sudden, we're seeing these crazy increases. And I have to say, I'm kind of a common sense person, but Confluence knew what they were getting. Confluence knew about, that the improvements would need to be made. It was mentioned that rates could even go down after these improvements are, are made. But I've never had a rate go down on anything. And I don't know. I mean, the truth is, I feel like Confluence is either poorly managed or they're doing a great job and they're going to make a huge profit once these improvements are done. That, that's all I have.
All right. Any questions from the commissioners? All right. About from the attorneys for the parties. All right, Ms. Newhoff, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the list is Stephen Rosier. Okay. Mr. Rosier has chosen not to testify. That's fine. Uh, and then next up is Gary Gotch. Mr. Gotch, would you raise your right hand, please? Thank you. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony given in this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Would you state and spell your name for the record?
My name is Gary, G.A.R.Y., last name Gotch, G.O.T.S.C.H. I have a home in Terrelac.
Go ahead, Mr. Gotch.
Okay, uh, I only have a couple of things here. One, I'm opposed to the single tariff pricing. I don't think that is fair. And the other thing I have here is in your handout that the PSB gave us here, is a kind of an oversee. It said that the proceedings before the commission, rates are to set to give the utility company an opportunity, but not a guarantee to earn a reasonable return on its investment after recovering its prudential incurred expenses. And my question is, is the rates that they're asking a reasonable rate of return on their investment?
Okay. All right. Are there any questions from the commissioners? About from the attorneys for the parties? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is Dennis Minear. Or is it Minear?
Minear.
Minear.
It's a tough one.
Batting about 333, which is better than most of the Cardinals nowadays. Uh, sir, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give today in this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir. Could you go ahead and state and spell your name?
Uh, my name is Dennis Minear. That's D.E.N.N.I.S.M.I.N.E.A.R.
All right.
And I live at Deer Run Estates.
Deer Run Estates? All right, go ahead.
Uh, in fact, our system was only acquired about eight months ago, at the beginning of November. So, we've only been with Confluence Rivers for a very short time. During the time that we were negotiating the takeover of our system, and I say takeover because we were paying a dollar for our system, not like the other folks, uh, I was the president of the association there. I have since moved over to being the treasurer of the association. I can tell you that, um, over the last 10 years or so, our costs for maintaining and operating our sewer system have been roughly 20 to $25,000 a year. That's paying an operator a monthly fee plus additional occurrences of blockages or whatever that he had to take care of. So, uh, the rate that Confluence Rivers is asking for is quite a bit higher than what we know the cost to be. We understand, um, I, I understand the, the concept of shared risk when it applies to an insurance company or to a company like Confluence Rivers when they take over a system like this. But we were also told previously that this rate increase would only apply to costs that had already been incurred. So, um, I don't see how a rate increase of 314% warrants that. It was also mentioned too, that, uh, they mentioned that all systems require same or similar investment. Okay, I understand that over the lifetime of a system, they're going to be very similar in their investment. But again, if this rate increases to pay for previously incurred expenses, then that would not apply in this case. Confluence Rivers, uh, you know, when we, when we sold the system to them or transferred the system to them, uh, I assumed at the time, wrongly so, that there would be more communication between the company and the association as far as what was going on with the system. Just to give us a heads up if nothing else, um, earlier today, the engineer mentioned that, uh, most of the systems were in distressed or poor condition. I know for a fact that our system was in very good shape because we had just completed a state inspection. In fact, had to wait to transfer the system. And so, our inspection was complete and passed. And during that process, one of the things that the state inspection staff, DNR staff, mentioned was that our burms needed to be, um, fixed essentially. They noticed a couple of minor, and I do say very minor, cases of erosion on the inside of the burms, nothing that would have created any sort of problem at any time in the near future. But they asked us to correct that, which we did. We increased size of our burms between the lagoons, the, the cells of the lagoon. And we rip-wrapped or put rock around the entire inside of all of the burms. Uh, in fact, when the staff from Central States, the, the guys that came down to do the pre-inspection, they were pleasantly surprised at our, the state of our system that it did not require any major work or anything. And we do know that they were planning on installing remote monitoring systems and that's fine. I understand that, that only helps them. But the cost of that should not warrant the increase that they're asking for. They also mentioned, um, cases of E. coli being out of, out of range for the DNR. To my knowledge, I only know of one instance that happened several months prior to them taking over the system. Now, if it happened after them taking over the system, then again, as many people have said, that's on them for not properly chlorinating and dechlorinating the water. There was also a mention of dead animals in the outlet pipe. That's kind of a fact of life when you live out in the middle of the country. Our system is not, we're not in a city. We are out in a rural area. It is a property owners' association type setup, not a municipality. So, the animal life is kind of a fact of life out there. I can think of a number of ways that you could probably alleviate that. And I would think that an engineer with a multiple-year education should be able to do the same thing. There have been a number of mentions here about communication. I think you mentioned as well, talked to one of the ladies that texting would be a good option. I have a degree in computer science. I know that you could easily set up a, um, system that would text everyone when there was an issue with, with their water systems. For us, it's not a problem. Our water is from the county. So, all we have is a sewer system. Our sewer system is a gravity system. It's very basic. There is no sewer plant. It's, uh, pipes in a lagoon. The, uh, I had extensive conversations with the prior operator. He explained to me his process. It was a very simple process. It could stand for some improvements, I'm sure. And with that, we understand that they might want to increase the rates somewhat. We've been on a $20 flat rate since they took over. If they knew that these rate increases were going to happen, and they obviously did because of the, um, case that already been filed or pre-filled, even you noticed that they were going to be filing a case, um, then I feel like those rates should have been higher initially so that they wouldn't have had to increase by a 314% now. been higher initially so that they wouldn't have had to increase by a 314% now. In short, we hope that the Public Service Commission does consider all the facts. I know the Office of Public Counsel, I read through all of the briefings, or at least skimmed through them all. There wasn't a lot of time to read them in detail. But I know the public service staff and the Office of Public Counsel have raised a number of objections and given a number of alternatives to the rate increase. And I seriously request that the board seriously consider some of those and try to do the right thing to alleviate the impacts on everybody here, not just us.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Yes, Chairman Root.
Thank you. You said you, you system sold to Confluence for $1?
Yes, sir.
Eight months ago?
Yes, sir.
What was the reason for the sale?
Mostly, we were wanting to, well, our operator, that had been doing it for a number of years, had gotten to the point where he actually wanted to retire. And he was having health problems. So he wanted out of the business. Trying to find another operator that would come in and do it was sketchy at best. And then there was also the hope that we would get out under any liability if there were something to happen to our sewer lines and things like that.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners? All right, hearing none. Mr. Kleiser.
I believe you mentioned, and I apologize if I misquoted you, $20,000 to $25,000 was what you felt like you spent?
Yes, sir.
Do you know how much of that specifically was employing the operator?
We paid him $850 a month, so that would have been $10,000. I'd have to do the math in my head again.
It's okay. $850 monthly is, that's what I needed to know.
And then there were usually a couple of instances a year, primarily early in the spring, when we'd have heavy rains. We'd get a little, we might get a blockage at the far end. Our system, we have a long, narrow lake, so our system feeds from houses on both sides down to a line that runs under the lake, actually.
Am I correct in assuming that, was this operator independent?
Yes. Well, I mean, he has a company, but yes. It was not a major company or something like Confluence Rivers. No, he was an independent.
And you said that he retired shortly before or after the sale?
He actually wanted to retire at the first of June last year, and he actually held on and waited until the sale was complete before he retired. Not only for us, but for some other customers he had too.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Minear.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the list is Shirley Pelker. Ms. Pelker, thank you. You've got your right hand raised. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony given in this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. Thank you. Could you go ahead and state your name and spell it for the record?
Shirley, S-H-I-R-L-E-Y, Pelker, P. as in Paul, E-L-K-E-R.
All right. And where do you receive service?
Lake Perry.
Lake Perry. All right. Go ahead.
May I first observe that I'm wearing red, pardon me, I'm wearing red for two reasons. Because I'm part of the Lake Perry community that you see, but also it says America down the side. My comments have more to do with the America down the side than they do with Lake Perry. I feel like I am in a twisted replay of the proverbial David and Goliath story with the reverse ending. This is not the first time I have felt this way. In 2020, the Lake Perry community petitioned the Public Service Commission, as Mr. Dewildee has pointed out, to allow us to purchase and run our own utility in order to make it a true service, sorry, and not a profit-making venture. We were denied this by the Public Service Commission. The denial came as no surprise to me after these following observations, which I personally made by attending the two-day hearing in Jefferson City. It was apparent to me as I observed folks greeting each other that Mr. Cox, who was the owner of Confluence Rivers, was well-known among the commissioners and others in Jefferson City. This was observed by me by watching people greet each other in the hallways and in the hearing room. Mr. Cox had a team of several lawyers, I think I counted four, whereas we struggled to employ one, and we were pleased to have the services of Mr. Kleiser as well. Number three, I observed a witness leave the stand, and as he returned to his seat, he winked at Mr. Cox. I was appalled. Number four, when our lawyer brought up the fact that Mr. Cox had previously declared bankruptcy, one of the commissioners, I don't recall his name, but he was seated to the far left in 2020, sat up to the microphone and berated our lawyer for bringing up this fact. This commissioner was highly upset and became red in the face defending Mr. Cox. This was not the behavior I expected from an impartial person. Lastly, of the two days of hearing, I don't know, let's say we were five or six hours the first day and four the second, I'm not positive, but I observed commissioners coming and going and coming and going through the doors that were on the sides. My estimate of one person's participation was approximately 15 minutes out of the two days. And I thought to myself, how is he going to know what went on for two days when he was only here 15 minutes? And I presume there was probably a book that thick of all the testimony, but quite honestly, did he read it? As I see it, it is the job of the Public Service Commission to watch out for people like us, to protect us, and not to let a company become a monopoly and take advantage of its constituents. So I'm simply asking the Public Service Commission to do its job and watch out for us.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions from the commissioners? About from the attorneys for the parties? All right. Thank you, Ms. Pelker. And next on the list is Bob Pelker. And yes, we're going to have to adjust that microphone. Mr. Pelker is quite a bit taller than Shirley Pelker. I'm going to strike that from the record, sir. All right, you've got your right hand raised. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony given in this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. And you are Bob Pelker, correct?
Right.
And you, how do you spell your last name?
B-O-B-P-E-L-K-E-R.
All right. And are you also a Lake Perry resident?
Yes.
All right. You can go ahead and give us your testimony.
Okay, my wife and I had, have a home in Lake Perry for over 33 years, and we are on a fixed income. Now, we got an 8.7% increase, percentage increase in the COLA this past year, which is highly unusual. There's been in the last 10 years as little as no increase, and usually 1. something or 2. something, but we got an 8.7% increase, which we gladly accepted. Confluence is asking for 133% on sewer and 144% on water, which is like 482% total. Now, to me, that's a little bit, the scales are tilted there. And I'm just asking, as a person on fixed income, as well as the other people at Lake Perry, that the board considers this as an outrageous increase. I understand that they have to increase the rates at one point or another, but I don't think 482% is justified.
All right. Are there any questions from the commissioners? All right. From the attorneys for the parties? All right. Indicating no. All right. Thank you, Mr. Pelker. There are nine names left on the list, and the next one is, looks like Sue Lawrence? Is that correct? All right. Is there a Mr. or Ms. Lawrence? All right. Let's get to the next one. The next one is Michelle Brown. All right, Ms. Brown, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony given in this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Can you go ahead and state and spell your name for the record?
Michelle, M-I-C-H-E-L-L-E, last name Brown, B-R-O-W-N, just like the color.
Okay. And where do you receive service?
Terlak, also known as TDL.
Okay.
All right. So TDL is a small community. We work on a system that has lagoons and wells. We don't have a fancy water treatment facility. And we vary our homes there from some gorgeous lake homes to the trailer park. The average income for TDL families is around $66,000 a year. We aren't deathly rich. We have to drive really far to get to anything. We are not part of Bonterre despite our address, so we don't get the privileges of that community in town. We are literally a community ran by an HOA. Our water company was created by the original developers, as my understanding. It was then sold to a family who ran it, who in return eventually sold it to Confluence. We haven't had an increase in a while, and I understand that an increase is necessary. I understand that we have some problems with our systems, even more so now that I've heard our fire chief talk. But do these problems justify an increase that would take the average water bill and sewer bill together from $42.40 to $152.23, especially in an economy where an average grocery bill that used to be $200 a week is now 400? It's not going to be fair to our fixed income retirees in that community, to our average family who has two children, one maybe going to college soon. It is not fair that we are going to be asked to pay a fee divided amongst a bunch of communities. We have communities here, communities in different parts of Missouri. Some have clearly shown that they don't need to have an increase this high. Maybe TDL does. I don't know, because we've been given no numbers. Nothing to show exactly what of this 29 million is related to TDL, and we have asked. $29 million, is that mostly made up of the cost for Confluence to purchase all these communities? And if so, they're making a purchase. It's a business. That should come not in outrageous increases to the consumer that has to use them. That's something that they need to blend out through their lifetime of owning their business. Again, I understand that we have to have an increase, but not an increase like this. It's unfair. It's unneeded. It's just downright criminal, in my opinion, because you're going to make families lose something. What are they going to give up? Are they going to give up their electric, taking their kid to maybe a baseball game so the kid's no longer going to be athletic? Something has to give. And right now, I think it's time for Confluence to give a little bit and not take it all from us. If they need to do it as a flat across the board, then it needs to come down a lot. Because we're not paying for the future. According to them, we're paying for what already has been put out. And I don't believe that 29 million was put into TDL. It just wasn't. Maybe three? So what's our increases on 3 million? That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Are there any questions from the commissioners about the attorneys for the parties? All right. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Next up is Eric Wagner.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Wagner, you do have your right hand raised. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony given in this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay, just a second, Mr. Wagner. The chairman was pointing out that there are a few people that are leaving, and I just want to remind everyone that they can make, even if they have to leave, they can make comments online via the PSC website, psc.mo.gov. Right, right. And it will be treated the same as the testimony today. It will be reviewed by the commission. So, Mr. Wagner, could you state and spell your name for the record?
Yes, it's Eric Wagner, E-R-I-C, Wagner, W-A-G-N-E-R.
Okay.
I live in Terlak.
Okay. Go ahead.
Question, am I allowed to ask this attorney a question? They're simple and basic. How many communities are we talking about? Terlak, Lake Perry, and?
In total, Confluence River has 68 systems.
Oh, 68 systems. So this will affect all of those, correct?
If you want to ask questions, I would ask you to talk to Mr. Silas. He should be able to help you.
Okay.
And for the sake of the record, that was Mr. Woodsmall.
Okay. I just wanted to kind of get a feel for what's being represented here today. It looks like there's three, Terlak, Lake Perry, and then Doe Run, I guess.
Deer Run.
Deer Run. Excuse me, like the animal.
Like the animal.
Okay.
Although Doe is an animal to hide.
Well, I worked for a utility for 41 years, so I'm familiar with seeing stuff like this. And I'm familiar with the equipment and the cost of things. And I understand that things have gone up crazy in the last couple of years. I'm not really seeing 29 million in paint and power washing and towers. And I'm familiar with analyzers. They're talking about inflammation of chlorinate. I'm just reading off their paperwork, okay? Chlorinization, equipment analyzer, repair of storage tanks, installation, new booster pumps. Some of that stuff's expensive, some of it is not. Toxic, you know, monitor toxic and, you know, stuff like that. But in our community, unfortunately, you know, I'm not really a fan of, you know, combining everybody together to Terlak's own demise because of, I know there's a lot of issues in Terlak. And I touched on them earlier with the water lines being too small, the sewer lines being too small. I'm just curious if an honest engineering evaluation and estimate of what needs to be done all the way across the board on every lakefront community has been honestly done, and a realistic number and list of all the different things that need to be improved and the things that do not need to be improved. Because some stuff needs to be addressed right away, some stuff can hold off, you know? So I'm just asking you guys to really put them, put their feet to the fire and ask them to be honest when it comes to laying out some serious groundwork on what was the inspection that you guys got at the beginning, or maybe now, of all the communities, and what is really needed for each one, and can some of this stuff be spread out? Because, you know, you listen to these people talk, and there's a lot of pain, you know, in having to come up with extra money. Medical bills aren't being paid, food maybe isn't being bought, you know? They're having to shut the air conditioner off and sweat at night, you know, when they're trying to sleep, you know, and some of these people are up in age. And, you know, I'm retired, but I'm blessed I can pay my bills, at least for now. So, you know, hopefully it continues to stay that way. But But, uh, um, I'm, I just, I just think it seems to me like, can, can I use an analogy? Okay.
Sure.
You, you go, you got an old muscle car, and you want to have it completely restored, and you take it to two shops. And one shop inspects it thoroughly and gives you a list of every single thing that it needs and gives you a number. And you go, "Okay, well, and, you know, I get, I get it. It's gonna be expensive." And then you take it to another shop, and they say, "Well, I don't know, man." They scratch their head and they look at it, and they go, "That's probably gonna be about a hundred-and-fifty grand to redo that." You know, and that's pretty much what it's gonna cost. And that's kind of what I'm seeing when I look at Confluence as far as, I just don't see where they're really spilling out and saying, "This is the plan that we're gonna have to replace your sewer lines. This is what we're gonna do to replace your water lines." They're just coming up with this huge number and this rate increase saying, you know, "This is what we want, and this is what we want now," you know, as far as, you know, just trying to figure out what is, what is, what is reality and what is fantasy land? You know, let's, let's, let's try to hit somewhere where, where we're being realistic about an actual correct number. And that's where the honest word comes in when it comes to an honest inspection from somebody who is certified, an engineer who really knows what he's talking about, looking at all the systems and seeing what really needs to be touched and what can be left alone for now. So...
Okay.
Yeah.
Are there any questions, uh, from the commissioners? About from the attorneys for the parties? All right. All right, thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you.
Next up is Mike Miller. All right. Mr. Miller has his right hand raised. Mr. Miller, do you swear or affirm that, that the testimony given in this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. Thank you. And could you go ahead and state and spell your name for the record?
Michael, M.I.C.K.U.A.L., Miller, M.I.L.L.E.R.
All right. And where do you have service?
Uh, Terrelac.
Okay. Go ahead.
Uh, first off, I adamantly opposed, or oppose the combined billing that they're, uh, proposing. I think that should be taken off the table right away. And once we get past that, then I think we should take each individual community, figure how much they have spent, and then come up with a rate increase based on that. Uh, they are kind of a monopoly in each location. There's not outside competition. Uh, so I don't know why it wouldn't be reasonable to have a fifteen-to-twenty-year return on their investment, of course barring any future work that they do, but that would be on a separate increase anyway. And, uh, that's pretty much all. I just think it's, it's too much.
All right. Are there any questions from the commissioners? No? Uh, how about from the attorneys? No? All right. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Next up, it looks like Don Davidson? Is there Mr. or Ms. David- Davidson? All right. I'm gonna say I'm wrong about Don.
Yeah, it was close. I get that a lot.
I'm sorry. What's, what was your first name?
Dion, D.I.O.N.
Oh, okay.
Davidson, D.A.V.I.D.S.O.N.
All right. Uh, you've got your right hand raised. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony given in this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And I'm gonna, uh, ask you again to spell your first and last name.
Dion, D.I.O.N., Davidson, D.A.V.I.D.S.O.N.
All right. And then where is your property located?
I have a residence in Terrelac community.
Okay. Go ahead.
I purchased that in two thousand and six. Uh, since that time, we've already seen a two-hundred percent increase over the years in our billing. Like I said, it's what we've incurred over this time. Uh, we're currently paying, I have property that I actually own in three different counties in Missouri. This is the highest property in far as water service and sewer service that I pay out of the three properties. Uh, I don't, you know, like I said, I disagree. I actually think the commission, and I think if you even ask concurrence as far as the information that they provided today, that we've had considerably issues with our service throughout the years. Uh, it's continued, uh, it's went on. I've had to personally, you know, purchased a water filtration system. We buy our own water, you know, out of bottles in order to bring in because we can't drink the water. Uh, this is all stuff and then costs that we've incurred as a resident, a consumer. Uh, I think it's kind of excessive, and I actually think that it should be denied by the commission for this, uh, increase at this time until they can actually get the, I guess, the, give us some kind of description or some kind of pattern that we can see, you know, that we've actually done some changes as far as the, the service and the product they're providing us. The consumer, as far as the trust and the commission and the water service that we're getting now, uh, doesn't exist in Terrelac as a community, and I think you've heard that all day. Uh, you know, like I said, it's just been continual and continual. So that's, that's primarily my concerns right now. I don't believe that, uh, we warrant an increase, especially at this rate, at, at the current service that we receive as a consumer.
All right. Yes, the chairman has a question for you.
Sure.
You said you had, um, lots of problems with the, uh, with the water system, and you had to go out and purchase a, your own filter.
Yeah, it, we've had, I mean...
Was that during, was that since the Confluence took over, or was that the history of the system?
This is a history from two thousand and six, from this time since I purchased this home.
Okay. And when have you noticed any, since Confluence has been...
I still have an odor currently. Uh, you know, like I said, that hasn't gone away. Uh, that's been there, you know, off and on. The boil order systems that come out, we don't know when that's coming. As far as the communication, I can, I actually have an issue right now. My bill, I've got a credit on my bill because they have double-billed us and even actually come out and hung a piece of paper on my door and told me that they were gonna just continue service, even though the, the bill was paid, so we double-paid up on that, and, you know, that's an issue I have right now. Communication's weak at best. Uh, it really is. So...
Thank you.
All right. Any other commissioners have questions? All right. Mr. Woodsmall has a question for you.
Same question I asked before. Um, would communication through text be better for you?
I think it would be. I mean, we're not getting anything right now. Um, when I did try to contact the company, it took us several attempts to even get ahold of a individual that could answer questions or even help us. So we finally got ahold of the consumers, and they, you know, like I said, they credited the bill. We had to go through the bank, you know, get the copies of the payments and stuff like that, that it, it accepted, but...
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson.
Did you say it took several attempts to get through to Confluence?
Yeah, until we got someone that could actually help us and assist with it.
So you were able to reach the company, it just took several, uh, attempts to find somebody to fix the problem?
Yeah, it was eight-hundred number on the billing.
Thank you.
Okay. And those were, for the sake of the record, those were from Mr. Kleiser, and Commissioner Coleman has a question.
Mr. Davidson, that, do you, uh, reach out to Confluence through a local number? Is there an eight-hundred number?
I believe it's an eight-hundred. It's one on our paper bill that we get.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Davidson.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Next on the list is Sharon Fiala.
Is that there? Okay. All right, good.
All right. Would you raise your right hand, please? Thank you. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony given in this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do? All right. Could you, uh, state and spell your name, please?
Sharon, S.H.A.R.O.N., Fiala, F.I.A.L.A. And I'm a resident of TDL, or Terrelac.
Okay. And I, you're kind of faded there. It's F.I.A.L.A.?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. And you're at Terrelac?
Correct.
All right. Go ahead.
All right. I would hope that the board will look at the history of Confluence, their business practices, and how they conduct themselves in these similar situations. We did an informal calling to other communities that have gone through this, uh, just at random, and I wish I had the names, but I don't. Uh, just asking, "How did you like it? How would it, you know, how did this work?" And they said, "Well, they came in," and this, this was like three, uh, different sources. They said that, um, yeah, they came in, they did a lot of painting, they did this and that, but they didn't think they did major stuff. And not just that, but they said support was lacking. They didn't get a lot of responses, no return calls, and so forth. Now, I can't substantiate that because I don't have the names of them, but we did some research, and we found that similar situations in other communities. And basically, they come in, they try and buy these stressed environments, they do some work, they were saying like putting lipstick on a pig, and they would do that, clean it all, then charge an exorbitant price. Now, I don't know, uh, we did have, I can't remember if there was an out-of-state one or not now. I'm sorry if, uh, uh, but anyway, uh, support, the exorbitant amount, it's the same thing that goes on, it seems like, in a lot of them. They do what's visual, what really looks good, but then they don't do a lot more maintenance going forward. I do question the single pay because, you know, it, I had asked the gentleman from Confluence approximately, "How many homes are we talking about in this combined single pay?" He said around two thousand. So let's just say two thousand for that sake. If you multiply that out over the course of the year, just for the sewer, it's almost two-hundred million dollars. I mean, that's a lot of money. Now, I realize they have other expenses and so forth, but that's really exorbitant, you know, for, from little communities like we have right now. Why can't, if we are going to have to pay these prices, why can't it be, uh, uh, done over a period of time? I mean, other companies do that. And not just that, why can't they roll in the water into, uh, the sewer all in one price and base the sewer on the water usage? That's common practice. You know, I don't understand why we can't just do that. What else? I guess that's about it. But again, I really hope you look at the history of the company and their business practices to see if it's warranted. And of those two thousand, by the way, of those two thousand, um, homes, TDL is fourteen-hundred of that. So it really is not fair to the smaller communities, but also, we would like to know if there is work that's going to be done, especially if we're gonna have to turn around and pay for it. We should have had some kind of say in what they were doing, in some way, shape, or form, knowing what we were going to do with it. We have no other recourse. This is a utility. We can't go someplace else, so we're really stuck. So you've got a lot of upset people and scared people, I might add. The older community in our, in our neighborhoods are so worried. They're, they're talking about they're gonna have to move, you know, because they're not gonna be able to afford this. Probably, they're living day-to-day as it is. So really, really look at their history and make sure that this is warranted, because nobody that I've talked to thinks this is warranted. We haven't seen a detail of what they've actually changed. So, thank you.
Okay. Are there any, are there any questions for Ms., uh, Ms. Fiala from the commissioners? All right. And from the attorneys? No? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Fiala. The third last name on the list is Clay Whitner.
Thank you for hearing all of us.
You're welcome. Uh, you've, you have your hand, your right hand raised. Uh, would, do you swear or affirm that the testimony given in this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
All right. Thank you. Could you state and spell your name for the record?
Clay, C.L.A.Y., Whitner, W.H.I.T.E.N.E.R.
And, um, where do you receive service?
I'm a resident from Terrelac, have been since nineteen-seventy-three.
Okay.
Oh, I'm also the president of the homeowners' association.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Whitner.
It, I don't have a lot of new stuff. I just wanted to reiterate some of the things that, uh, Mr. Miller had and Mr. Francis from, uh, Port Perry. It would have been a whole lot more easier to take for all of these communities had Confluence been a little more better at communication. As you've heard several times today, that's a huge issue. Uh, maybe they could work with the HOA to get things across to the community better. Um, our, our public works department has a horrible time getting in touch with, with, uh, Confluence. One of the big things that everybody is having a hard, hard time understanding, and Mr. Miller alluded to the first, when we were asking questions, if there would have been a, uh, a spreadsheet of cost versus, you know, revenues versus costs, this twenty-nine million dollars, as you've heard from like Little Deer Run and Port Perry, it's hard to imagine how twenty-nine million dollars, uh, could have been spent thus far, and now we're wanting to, the improvements to be done in Terrelac are still extensive, I'm sure. So that would have helped communication-wise, had they been able to define, "Here's how much it costs to paint that tower." A hundred thousand, or a million, or whatever it is. Whatever, what everybody's afraid of is that the cost of these, uh, acquiring these developments is part of this twenty-nine million dollars. They're also concerned that, "How much of this administrative fees? How much of this is industrial fees?" Uh, there's just so many uncertainties out there that people would really, uh, like to know. We, we appreciate what they've done for our development, Terrelac, for the most part. There are a lot of things, uh, like when they make, uh, come in and have to repair plumbing, they do road cuts. Our public works department has been months trying to figure out who in the world's gonna pay for this? Is it gonna be us, the homeowners? Well, it has been. Um, we're the ones that have to go back after they made it, they made a road cut within, oh, maybe a hundred and fifty feet from my house, and it's still there, uh, waiting to find out who is gonna patch this road cut. And that's on a new piece of pavement that's just been put in. Another thing that kind of alarms us, especially with me being on the board, I had to go to my community and say, "Hey, I'm gonna need another," uh, you just heard from, uh, well, Jeff and Steve a while ago, from our community, from the fire department. Our, our pumpers, not pumpers, but our fire trucks that we have currently, we can't depend on the fire hydrants to put out fires for our homes. So we now have to, we're considering, well, we're not considering, we've just ordered a brand-new, not a brand-new, we couldn't afford that, a used pumper truck to make sure that we can pump the water out of our lakes to put out house fires. We have to, everybody, all the other local fire departments, they have to do the same thing when they come to Terrelac. They have to assume that the, that the public water system will not support their trucks. We're gonna have to pump the water out of the lakes to put the fires out. With, you know, with all that having been said, it, I, I too understand, you know, two thousand could help defer the cost of, of fourteen-hundred like we are. But when you hear these people talk about, you know, they sold their water company for a dollar, and we sold ours for no telling how many millions of dollars, well, we didn't, Terrelac didn't, one individual did who didn't take care of us in the, in the past. We would just like for you guys to think about all these things that have been said today, and make sure that when you make a decision, you make it reasonable and you make it just for all of us. That's about really all I've got.
All right. Thank you. Chairman Root?
Thank you, sir. The issue with the fire hydrants, is that because of work that Confluence has done, or was that issue existing pre-Confluence, uh, taking over?
That's the mess that they talked about before. They bought into a mess. As every, every person, not every person, but most of the people that have stood up here and, and, you know, explained to you before, they bought into a mess, they knew it was a mess. Uh, we've had homes burnt to the ground where our fire trucks tried to hook up to the fire department, to the, the, uh, fire hydrants.
I understand. So I just, just to clarify, that problem existed prior to the company?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Coleman?
Mr. Whitner, um, couple things. Can you verify, I think I, I heard that there are fourteen-hundred homes in the homeowners' association area?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct? And can you give me a ballpark figure of the total population of the community, not of the homeowners' association, but the town?
The...
Terre de Lac.
The Terre de Lac community is 5,000 acres. Probably 2,000 of it is developed. Of that development, there are about, and 1,400 is kind of a rough guesstimate. Of that 1,400 homes, I'll bet you 15 to 20% of them are summer homes. I know, I live at the end of a lake, and around me, I probably have five or six homes that are full-time residents. The rest are summer homes. So it's kind of hard to tell you how many people live there every day, day in and out.
All right. And relative to the issues you've having with repairs when it comes to roads, have there, has there been any conversation with Confluence about those repairs after they've come in and made the road cuts and anything else?
We have tried numerous times. I got one board member that has a friend of someone who works on the board, he's been trying desperately for probably five or six months to get in contact with, to get some kind of a definitive answer that says, we'll pay you to do this, we're paying another vendor to do this, we don't know.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the commissioners?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Kleiser.
You had mentioned Public Works Department having difficulties communicating with Confluence.
There, it's getting better, but in the first, we couldn't get hold of them at all. It's just like everybody says, you call and you get a recording, you're done.
So I'm going to ask a couple of questions. First, are you contacting the 800 number on bills?
On, no.
No?
No.
How do you contact the company, then?
I don't contact them, I have Public Works contacting them.
Sorry.
I don't know how they do it.
You have no idea how they do it? Okay. And the difficulty, was that in getting to a person, or was that you got to somebody, but they couldn't help you?
It's difficult to getting to a person.
Getting to a person. All right. And you said that it's getting...
Communication, that's the big issue.
I understand. And you said that it's getting slightly better?
Yes. Not a lot. We still don't know who's going to fix those roads.
Can you elaborate on how it's getting better? Have you had...
They're actually getting to talk to an individual, but apparently it's not an individual high enough to say, yeah, we're going to take care of the roads, or he's going to take care of the roads.
Okay. And when did that change occur roughly?
Maybe in the last 30 days at the most.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Soon.
That was all of my questions.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions from the attorneys for the parties? All right, Mr. Whitner, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the list is Michael Barnes. All right, Mr. Barnes has his right hand raised. So, Mr. Barnes, do you swear or affirm that the testimony given today in this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I affirm that.
All right, thank you. Could you go ahead and state and spell your name for the record?
Sure, it's Michael, M-I-C-H-A-E-L, Barnes, B-A-R-N-E-S. And I am, I live, well, we have a house out at Lake Perry or Port Perry, depending on how you guys are going to call it. Excuse me. The first thing I'd like to say is that, based upon the things that have been brought up in this meeting, my wife and I, and I talked to her on the phone, we're against one-tier pricing. And the reason for that is, Terre de Lac, they're, the gentleman who's in charge of their fire department brought up how much it would cost to bring in the lines, to repair the water pressure, for them to have adequate fire hydrants and things. And also, the gentleman who's standing right back there in the question and answer portion, brought up the fact that a, there's a certain percentage, and he's not quite sure how many, or what it's going to cost, for that community to be brought up to standard when it comes to their grinders, their culverts, and their lines on the private property. But Confluence Rivers has some kind of, I guess, plan on how to do that. And if you start looking at, and the reason I'm bringing this up is, we built the house, and when you look at a culvert, a grinder, and lines, it's not a small amount of money. So all of a sudden, we're getting into a large amount of money that that community is going to have to, the Confluence is going to have to repair. And my community, which has almost no problems with its water, or at least what was stated when it was all testified to, we have a small amount of problems, and we would have to supplement the other community, and that would be a big burden on us. During the question and answer period, the gentleman who's standing right back there again stated that our rates currently are lower than the national average, and that's all well and good, but we live in rural America. I don't live in Washington, D.C. I don't live in New York City. I don't live in LA, and I don't live in Chicago. So trying to say that my rates are lower, well, yeah, they're lower because my cost of living is lower. So therefore, Confluence River, to repair things in our area, is going to be lower than those areas. So our bill should be lower. We also own a house in Cape Girardeau, and if we raise, well, Confluence River is allowed to raise the sewer to $82.96 on our house at Lake Perry, in the one-tier pricing model, that's a, that's $47.87 higher than my sewer bill in Cape Girardeau. My sewer bill in Cape Girardeau, and I'm looking at it, is $35.09 on the bill. So you want to raise it to $89? That's kind of strange to me. You could come back and say, oh, you're comparing apples and oranges. You're absolutely right, because Cape Girardeau is a little bit bigger. There's about 17,000 customers, according to the city's website, that currently use water and sewer there. If we want to compare apples and apples with Confluence River, which has about 4,000, I believe it was stated, 4,000 customers in the state, the city of Perryville has 3,624 customers, according to their website. So it's roughly about the same size, their water department and what they service. And for you to have, to go in and open a water, to get a water bill with them, with no usage of water, and I called this morning, it's $12.64 for sewer. That's a difference of $70.32. So things are not right here on what's being asked for by Confluence Rivers. And then when you add in that one-tier pricing model, that really gets kind of, a little bit iffy for us at Lake Perry. Rich DeWilde, you spoke earlier, showed me a document, it's file number WA-2019-0299, and I believe it was testimony that was given before the commission, that was effective September 25, 2020. Confluence River stated in that, that the water portion of Lake Perry's, you know, that the problems that were out at Lake Perry for the water portion, they had first estimated that it was $693,000, or roughly that. And then they readjusted it to 229,000. Well, when you divide that by 600 people in our community, that's $381.66 worth of repairs. And in a year, that works out that if we all pay that, $31.80. Well, I can pay back what they feel is the problem with the water portion out there in a year, and we could all do that, and I think we'd all be happy paying for one year an additional $31.80 if we didn't have to incur any other expenses after that. That's my testimony.
All right. Are there any questions from the commissioners? All right. Any from the attorneys for the parties? All right. Hearing none?
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Barnes, thank you. All right, last on the list is Kathy Swan.
That works.
All right, Ms. Swan has her hand raised. Ms. Swan, do you swear or affirm that the testimony given in this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, thank you.
All right. And could you go ahead and state and spell your name for the record?
Yes, Catherine Swan, Catherine, K-A-T-H-R-Y-N, Swan, S-W-A-N.
All right. And are you a Confluence customer?
Yes, at Lake Perry.
All right. Go ahead.
Thank you, Judge, Chair Rube, Commissioners Coleman, Holman, and Han. I have been fortunate, my husband and I have a main residence in Cape Girardeau. In 2019, we were able to purchase property at Lake Perry. My concern in addressing you today is not only for the rate increase, but the quality and the safety of the water that is provided. We purchased in the fall of 2019, began an extensive remodeling project early 2020. When it came time to turn the water back on, the water heater was not working, and a considerable amount of rust had to be removed from the faucets. At that time, we assumed it was simply due to an old water heater, or perhaps even the previous company who was supplying the water. But since then, we've had to replace two water heaters, all because of corrosion or sediment in the bottom of the water heater. We also were fortunate to have several copper sinks that we had salvaged from our previous home, that were about 15 years old. Along with two new ones, we had those utilized at the home at Lake Perry. We began noticing corrosion on the sinks and a palpable pitting of the finish in the sink itself. Someone suggested we purchase a water softener system that that might resolve the issue, and that did seem to do so. However, it didn't seem to have any impact on the water heaters, because after that, the bottom of one of the water heaters, which happened to be relatively new, rusted out completely and flooded the basement, which was also finished at the time. Currently, within the last few months, we have had to replace the flush mechanism on three different toilets in our home because of corrosion due on the chain and the interior mechanism, internal mechanism of the tank, in the tank itself. In addition to that, and the cost of that, we live relatively close to the well itself, which is located on a hill some distance behind our home. And at some point, obviously, it was determined by the company that a repair or the installation of a new line would be necessary, and they would cross our property to do so. In the process, we assumed the property would be left in the same condition in which it was found before the installation. But it was not, because there were ruts and mud, and so therefore, we had to have gravel hauled in to repair the gravel driveway. Then a leak developed in that line, and that proceeded for a few weeks without being found, and we're not there full-time, obviously. That caused additional erosion on the driveway itself, of which we had to bring in more gravel for repairs. So due to having incurred significant financial costs already, a rate increase of this size, simply as the saying goes, adds insult to injury. So I thank you for your time, thank you for the opportunity to testify today, I know it's been a long day.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Swan. Are there any questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Coleman.
How are you?
I'm well, and you?
Fine, good to see you.
Good to see you.
So a question I asked just a moment ago regarding repairs to roadways, driveways, wherever there has been work done, and have you reached out to Confluence about the disrepair left on your property when they've completed work?
No, we did not. No, it's just something that you assume that there will be another visit by a company, and they'll return it to the original condition, but no, we did not.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right. Are there any other questions from the commissioners? All right. Mr. Kleiser with the Public Counsel's Office has a question.
A series of quick questions regarding the incident where the repair was made across your property.
Yes.
The repair or the new line was made across your personal property, correct?
That's correct.
And did Confluence reach out to you before that repair was made and execute any kind of agreement for you regarding a right-of-way or a purchase of the land?
They may have reached out, it would have been to my husband, and I don't recall, and I've not asked him that question recently, but I know there was no type of agreement or written agreement.
So are you aware of whether or not the company instituted any kind of condemnation process regarding the lands?
I'm not aware that they did.
All right. And you're not aware of any change in deed or any kind of record of land right regarding that, that new line usage?
No, I'm not.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Swan.
Thank you.
And...
Your Honor?
Yes.
One question to follow up on that. Do you know if the work was done in a pre-recorded easement?
No, I don't know that either, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And that was Mr. Wood Small, for the sake of the record.
Thank you.
Now, there are no additional names on the list, but is there anyone here who did not put their name on the list, but would like to testify? All right. And you have your right hand raised, thank you. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony given in this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
All right. And what is your name?
Nicholas Paplanus.
Could you spell that?
Oh, P-A-P, double Ps, both Ps.
I'm sorry. Can you...
Sorry, Peter Apple Peters.
Peter.
Just single P on that last one, I'm sorry. Peter Apple Peter, Larry Alpha, I say Nancy, United States. I'm talking on my NATO today, so...
Gotcha, gotcha, thank you. And where is it that you have service?
Lake Perry, Port Perry, depending on what timeframe.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, mine's mainly just an appeal to the initial conversations that were had a couple of years back. So gentleman earlier referenced case number WA-2019-0299. I would highly recommend reviewing that in its entirety, along with the testimony that's happened today. So a lot of the fears that were, actually, I'm going to sit if that's okay. Do you guys care? Okay, cool. Sorry about that. So a lot of the community expressed fear early on for everything we're testifying about today. I say the loss of control of decision-making that impacts the community, the inability to be able to kind of right-size for our community. So some of the discussions we had today was on leveraging a broader community. That sounds like a terrible idea when your company's plan is to pick distressed communities. Like in insurance, my cost is lower because the assumption is, most of the time, I won't need it. But for me, it'd be a great deal if I have to use it all the time, but in our community, when you right-size, we'll say, what was it, 83 different communities, we're obviously going to hit a higher number. So the issue that we had initially was, we came and we said, we feel that this is going to be a detraction, this is going to be a hardship for our community. We would request that you block this. We would request that you allow us to stand up a business plan. Our rates that are in the business plan are lower than their, I say loan rates, it's lower than the numbers that they're able to provide. We already have an HOA. Our HOA is able to go forecast labor, forecast needs, get competitive rates, build into the costs we're already collecting for our community, and be able to make those decisions independently, not, you know, be provided to it. So that was denied. And specifically, what we were afraid of was, on the back end of us not being able to have that autonomy, this company would have it, would come in, a large rate increase would come through, be unsustainable, we would be powerless to stop it. That's, these are all, in that previous case, these were all brought up. Overwhelmingly, our community came together and opposed the, I say, them acquiring our community. I say, we were ignored, so to speak. I say, and at this point, everything we said has now become factual, everything is happening. Right now, they're talking about large-scale increases. At no point do we have open disclosure, here's all the items that are going to be changed, here's why it's a requirement for your community, here is a competitive analysis, or comparison of multiple different pricings for multiple communities, could this be outsourced? When we do an HOA decision, for instance, we have multiple parities that look at the activity and say, we will compete amongst these, find what makes the most sense for what we need. We have no input to that, we have no control of that. So I think another thing that was discussed frequently today, and I think that it's important to analyze, you know, a couple of times, we asked, what's the average house of the home, or cost of the home? So I'll tell you, if you asked me that question 15 years ago on the house, I'd say 120,000. If you asked me five years ago, I'd say 300,000. If I asked, if you asked me last year, I'm going to say, oh, probably close to 500. If you asked me a few more years now with the market where it is, it's not a fair comparison, because most of the people in my community have lived there for decades. Their money is fixed. That's a more fair comparison. The size of... The size of their house or the area that they're at does not equate to what they can afford to pay. And when you have an absorbent increase on that, on a fixed income, you're forcing a very difficult decision for some people. So one of the ladies that talked earlier, she was talking about, uh, being a seasonal person. So seasonal, if the base rate is $100, so what we pay for our HOA right now, it's either 750, 850, I can't remember exactly. So at an $80 rate increase, it's a $960 increase. If there's a $50 disconnect, a $50 reconnect. If you start doing the math, all of a sudden, what used to be 750 or 850 to have a temporary usage place is now ballooning well past the cost for us to care for our roads, care for our lake, care for everything else. The numbers don't match up and the vast majority of our community does not have a fluctuating piece. Some of us are lucky enough that we can say, I can forego this. Other people could potentially lose their home. A definite thing that will happen is for the people that are seasonal, they will go to other communities away from here, away from this increase because this increase is not the same everywhere else. It is significantly higher everywhere, or here than everywhere else, which means that they abandoned us. That has a deeper impact on us. When they abandon us, it doesn't just remove them from the support structure, that removes the money from the HOA that pays to fund our actual community. It actually guts our community by doing this. At this point, it's moved past, we don't have an alternative at this point. All we have is the hope that, you know, a third-party commission or a different group or the commission will look at this and say, this is untenable. The purpose of this, I can't go to a different water company. If I don't want to go to Walmart, if I don't wanna eat McDonald's, I have an option. I have somewhere I can go. I can make decisions based on that. As a utility, we don't. We have no alternative. And so, you know, mine, going on testimony is just trying to point, please look back to the original, uh, cases and filings. Look at what we were concerned for. We laid out exactly what it would do to our community and we're on the face of it now. I say, I've, you know, got more than one residence. I say, and anybody that I've talked to when we were discussing this, I've heard nobody that was even close to this precedent on this price. I get the nature of it. What I don't get is, if I have $2 million in repair, why do I not, as a community, have the right to say, I will only take my 2 million and I will figure out what a loan rate and amortization rate, and I will work with you and I will figure out a way to make it feasible? I say, but I won't do it based on an email that tells me, by the way, in the next two months, your rates are gonna move up at a rate that is astronomical, two to three times more than it, especially to a community that has no way to escape. I say, especially in a situation where the only way out of this public utility is to sell your home. And it's to sell your home in a market which has a very ballooning rate currently at this moment. So even there, you're pushing them into a very difficult situation. I would ask to look back at the original writings and try to bring some reason into this. If nothing else, break down the pieces where it states that they're going to share our costs. Let us have our own cost. If nothing else, show us what the costs are. Show us what analysis they've done and the different companies they use to derive those numbers. Don't just give us a number and basically expect the rest of the community to somehow sur-, I say, surpass the issue. So that's, that's what I got.
All right, thank you. Do the commissioners have any questions? All right. About the attorneys for the parties? They're indicating no? All right, thank you, sir. All right. Um, did, would the commissioners like to make closing remarks? I'm sorry, Mr. Kleiser?
Were there anybody else?
Oh, are there others that would like to testify? Okay. All right. Any closing remarks by the other commissioners? Mr. Kleiser?
Thanks, Judge.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Commissioner Holsman? Oh, I'm sorry, what? Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I thought, I thought you wanted to make some remarks, Commissioner.
Ju-, Judge, Judge, I did. I, I'm having a hard time with the star six today, I don't know why that's making us do that. But, um, I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out. It was a very good discussion. We heard a lot of feedback that we will take into consideration when making this decision. And, uh, just wanted to say, thank, thank you for taking the time. And, and thank you, Judge, for, for running a good meeting.
Sure.
To follow Commissioner Holsman. To follow Commissioner Holsman, I am also thankful for the testimony today. It was very insightful and helpful and I, and I appreciate everyone coming out, um, and spending their afternoon informing us. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Hahn. Um, and I would like to thank all the, the participants for coming out today and, uh, testifying today. Um, so if there is nothing further, Mr. Kleiser?
Sorry, one really quick bit of business. I anticipate that the, uh, experts for the OPC may wish to use portions of the testimony given today. I would ask the commission to query whether it's possible to expedite this testimony before the due date for rebuttal testimony, which is currently June 29th, or in the alternative, whether or not we can expedite the posting of the record, sorry, the recording, so that experts can rely on it before that due date. Does that make sense?
Uh, it does make sense. So you would like, uh, the transcript, excuse me, before June 29th?
If possible, or if not, just to ensure that the recording made today is posted somewhere that OPC's experts can rely on it before that due date.
Uh, Mr. Lehmanns? It'll be posted Monday, the, the recording.
Uh, yeah, this is Ryan Irving, uh, staff, uh, if I have any objections to that.
All right. Not sure what that is, but.
That was my only bit of business, thank you.
I'm sorry. All right. It's, if there is nothing further, I'm gonna adjure the hearing and we'll go off the record. Thank you.